I call the Library Board of Trustees Meeting Thursday, May 7th, 4:00 p.m. to order.
Tea times are staggered by
Well, it's 3:00 p.m.
Rakes in the traps and nobody has to touch a rake, and players are encouraged to get right to their cars as soon as their round is over. Hey, Brock and Bob, how are we on W C A Sports Airtime?
Somebody said, is the TV on or?
First conference call today on how safely reopen the region for the summer tourist season. The group is made up of 21 people, including legislators from the Cape, health officials and business leaders.
They have Think of the noise background.
Concerns for local businesses that depend on summer travelers. The staff force will have an online component so the public can name
I think Joanne, I think maybe it's Joanne's screen.
What do you want me to do?
Is there some TV or other thing playing?
Oh, yep. Okay, not now.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Zoom was easier.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so on the agenda, I had put just a discussion about the COVID-19 and library services and reopening, potential reopening. Because obviously, a lot of places now are starting to think about that. And I just wanted to kind of talk about some of the things that, you know, I've recently attended a lot of different online webinars about, you know, with sales, mass library system, and the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. They've all had different webinars about these things, and I've gotten to talk with other librarians about what other libraries are doing and thinking. So I'm hoping that we can kind of figure some things out here, but what I'm going to try to do is work on a reopening plan, which a lot of libraries are doing. So and maybe have, you know, over the next week, have something mapped out. You know, it's probably going to be fairly general in some areas because there's so many things still up in the air. But I think as long as we have kind of some sort of a plan that we can put in place to follow some guidelines. And obviously, there are some things that health officials are going to sort of dictate to us, which we won't be able to change, but but I think that's important for us to do as the timeline kind of gets closer for potential reopening in some fashion. So I don't know if anybody had, I just wanted to mention it first to see if there was anything specific that you want to go over, or I can kind of go over some of the guidelines I've seen. But if anybody wanted to bring up anything that was, they thought was really important to kind of start off with.
I just said
I just wanted to tell about the order.
I'm sorry?
I just wanted to tell about the roll call order.
Oh, right. I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Just to make it easier, because everyone's mic is on, if we just kind of go from, I'll give you the roll call list. So when I call your name, you're speaking, and then the next person, and then we'll go around again. So if somebody says something that you, oh, I want to talk about that, make a note, okay? So Karen will talk, then Diana, then Jen. Then I'll call Joanne, then Pam, Linda, John, and then myself. Does that sound okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. So Diana?
Sorry, I'm going to mute my phone. No, I let you take the point on this, Karen. You've already seen what I've sent to you before, so.
Yeah.
And?
Do I have to speak or?
Do you have anything to, that you want to bring up, or any comments about how we handle opening, anything?
Oh, no, I would like to hear Karen's reopening plan and ideas. I'm certainly not the expert in this.
Okay, Karen, why don't we go back to you then?
Okay, so just some general topics, which a lot of libraries have gone over for their reopening, was obviously materials handling. How are we going to handle returns? Do the book drop, and then eventually, when people do come in through, you know, inside returns. So that is a topic in terms of, you know, quarantining items, wiping them down, having some sort of a system in place for that. So some, just some initial thoughts that I had, because the community room is probably not going to be used for some time, you know, period of time for any sort of meetings, that is a space that we can use because we're so limited with space elsewhere in the building, to use that as a sort of spot where we can quarantine items safely. So, you know, we are waiting to hear back to from, there's a federal organization that has guidelines for quarantining items in this, in this situation. So we're waiting to hear back some more details about what, you know, how long that would have to be for particular items. So that is going to be something that I'll be including in the plan. Like I said, I was hoping to work on that in this, this coming week, and have something more concrete. But in terms of using the community room, you know, whether we have, you know, different tables set up for different days of the week. So when items are returned, we leave them on that table for however many days it's going to be before they get back into circulation to go out to people. Also, obviously, programming. We're probably not going to be having extensive programming, if any, for some time. So for that, you know, right now, we are actually doing, we started doing some book discussions online through Zoom, and that will probably be continuing, and we're totally, hopefully, we can expand. I know Julia, the reference librarian, is looking into doing some trivia, maybe. And then like maybe some story times, things like that. So that would be something that we would continue into the, into the future to, in the next few months, trying to expand our programming online to bring people in that way. Also, some guidelines about entering and exiting the building. So, you know, we only have that one entrance. So how do we sort of navigate the flow in the building of people coming in, people going out? You know, that's something we need to think about. And then in terms of the desk, you know, some of the corridors there, like in front of the circulation desk, you know, maybe do we have people go one way and then around the other way on the other side? So, you know, we're putting in like six-foot distance, things like that. The, you know, I had been looking into, sales put out a message about a website where we could purchase protective glass or protective, it's not glasses, plastic, protective plastic that we can put up at the circ desk. So that's something I'm looking into. But I also am going to be writing a letter to the town administrator with some concerns, just about specific to the library, like in terms of, you know, getting protective equipment for staff, in terms of cleaning, things like that, that, you know, maybe the Board of Health could give us some guidelines about what we should be doing. Also, let's see, in terms of our computers, you know, when people come into the building, as all of you know, that we have very limited space for our computers, so they're like, a lot of them are right next to each other. So in terms of that, do we, you know, maybe look into purchasing some laptops, which we had kind of planned on doing anyway? But maybe we need to push that up a little bit, the timeline on that, so that we have more access, because I'm expecting, at some point, once, you know, we have more full services open, people are going to need to be accessing computers and printers. Like, a lot of people are maybe looking for jobs or, you know, needing that type of assistance. So hopefully, we'll be able to have some access, more access to computers where we can, you know, expand so that people aren't crammed into one room using the computers. And, you know, one of the other concerns too is with assisting people. So if we do have people coming in, how do we handle, you know, technical help? That is a big portion of what we do. People come in, they need help with something, and, you know, somebody at the circ desk or reference or children's services are closely interacting with them to assist them with something. And that's something we're going to have to, that, you know, that's probably going to have to change quite a bit. And that's something that right now, like, you know, I, I don't have anything set specifically for how to handle that yet, but that's something I'll think, could definitely think about, because that's, you know, an important part of what we do. Let's see, what else? There was, you know, obviously, like I said, the protective equipment, that's something that I'm going to be talking to the town about to see if, to make sure that we have sufficient supplies and things like that. And, you know, just to bring up too, there, I have heard from a lot of other libraries that they are, their towns are furloughing people, laying people off. So that is a concern that, you know, I want to figure out in terms of for Hanson, is that something that the town is considering? Is, you know, I haven't heard anything so far, but I definitely want to make sure we're on top of that, so we're not kind of blindsided by something that comes out that, you know, we want to make sure that we're aware of what's going on. So in terms of what I kind of just laid out there, was there any questions anybody had? There's a lot of other services, obviously, that we have, you know, museum passes, that's probably going to change quite a bit. And actually, cleaning, I wanted to mention that too. With our custodian being so limited with his hours, you know, it's something that I think we need to think about. And again, that's something I'm going to talk to the town about in terms of how do we make sure that the building is cleaned properly with, you know, what the custodian now with his hours is not going to be sufficient, I don't think, to properly clean the facility in these times to, you know, with the hours that he has. So that's something that I'm definitely going to be addressing as well. So was there any questions anybody had regarding anything?
Diana, did you want to say anything? Are you still good?
Am I, am I off you? Sorry. I definitely, I like the idea of using the community room as a staging area for items that are returned. I, when you mentioned about the, the virtual things you're trying to do, I would love, although I don't have a little, I would love to see some sort of a story time, you know, like I pointed out where the Holbrook Fire Department's doing that at night for the kids. You know, you've got Bolly Parton doing it. It would be really great to have something like that, if we could do it. You know, definitely setting up the circ desk with one-way tape on the floor, things like that. And now, when you talk about the protective, I'm just going to call it glass, but the protective glass, the circ desk, would that also be Kate and Julia's desk?
Yes, that's what I was thinking. So to get four different ones. But there's also too the issue of, because the desks are so close together, that I'm thinking that we're going to have to have some sort of alternating schedules for staff, because, you know, two people at the circ desk, you know, those, those seats are only like a few feet apart, and then Julie and Kate, they're only a few feet apart as well. So you wouldn't be able to have them there probably at the very beginning at least. You know, all of them together, or even like a couple, and you might have one person at the circ desk, and then either Kate or Julia, but not together. But we do have the laptop, so one of them could be using that elsewhere, potentially. But we definitely have to think about alternating schedules and how that's going to work.
Yeah, that would, that would work. I definitely agree, getting some more laptops sooner than later would be helpful, whether it's patrons and or staff. I think that's definitely something we need to discuss further. Now, when you mentioned about the furloughing and now about the staff maybe staggering hours, have you had discussions with the town administrator already about how, how is that working out currently in Town Hall? Are they already staggering in Town Hall? Have any been impacted with, you know, part-time furloughs? Have there been discussions with you and the town administrator regarding staffing at all?
Nothing related to furloughs. I haven't heard anything about that, but, you know, I have heard in terms of what Town Hall is doing, they have, I think some of their people are considered essential, so they are, I know that they're working. And they have, but they have separate offices, so they are quite distant from each other. So some of them are going and working. And he, you know, here, we were instructed, based on the governor's order, that staff does not report. So we've been sticking with that pretty much. So I, and, but I know a lot of people at Town Hall are not working as well. We are keeping track of all, all hours. If somebody does, you know, spend at home, is they're working from home, we're keeping track of all of that as we were instructed to do. So, so, I mean, there is, it is pretty similar with what we're doing with what they're doing, although, like I said, some of them are considered essential, so it is a little bit different.
Okay, yeah. I think that's going to be an important thing to, to work through with the town administrator. We don't want to come up with a plan only to find out that the town administrator is planning on doing a furlough and just hasn't communicated it yet. So that, to me, is important to be having those discussions now, so that we're not blindsided after spending all of our time to come up with a plan to find out that he or that, you know, the selectmen have a different plan.
Right.
And as far as like the, I know when you mentioned about the interaction with patrons and how to work through all that, have you, it would be, might be helpful to reach out to staff? Maybe have a virtual staff meeting to say, you know, let them get their juices flowing, because oftentimes, they're going to have ideas, because you've got so much on your plate right now with a lot of reopening. And by reaching out and putting ideas on their plates, they're going to be creative in ways that sometimes you're just not going to have the brain power to do. So I would reach out to them to see, what do they have for ideas and suggestions themselves, knowing their library, knowing their workflow, their museum passes, things like that. I think getting feedback from all of them, you know, maybe giving them an agenda in advance of things to think about would be really helpful.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll stop talking now.
I did a Ted McSelectment meeting, and the budget was fine for the rest of this year. So far, they haven't said anything about any kind of furloughs, layoffs or anything. You know, if budget for next year? That we'll have to see. But at the same time, at some point, we're going to have to have John Stambro come to a meeting, because we're still working less than the other, with less than the other departments. We're all back at the level before the cuts, and the library still is not back to the level. So I don't know how much more they could cut us. The other thing, one of the webinars I attended, they suggested that it would take three weeks to get the library ready. The first being, people come back, so, you know, they said the first couple of days don't really plan anything constructive, because it's an emotional thing too. And, and then working with your staff, just as like Karen outlined, what you have to do in the library and everything. So it's not like they say, okay, you can open on Monday. It'll take a few weeks to get there. Once they, you know, say you can. And of course, it's all in conjunction with the Board of Health as well.
Sorry, can I just interject? Just one, one more thing that I thought of, that I just wanted to throw out there, and then I'll put my talk back on mute, was about the school. In finding out, are there ways that the library can be supporting the schools? And, you know, making ourselves more essential than less essential? By, you know, marrying up with the schools to help support the, whether it's the younger kids, the middle kids, whatever, but are there things we can be doing that will help support the schools?
Yeah, does anybody know if they're still doing any sort of outreach to parents? Like, I know they have all like emails. We used to send out all of our flyers to them, and they would send it out to email to all parents? If they're still doing anything like that, or?
Yeah, they are communicating, but I know, I don't know if PM has insight based on non-high school. I don't know what's going out for the younger kids. I don't know what any of that communication is. But I think it would be definitely helpful if, you know, if maybe for the, the younger kids to, to teach them about tumble books and have a little session with them, or things like that. It might really be helpful, or for the middle kids to realize what's available to them through Libby and the other one, not Hoopla, but Overdrive, for books online, or even movies or videos or things like that, that the teachers may not have the bandwidth to add that to their schedule, because they're already working, you know, 24 hours a day, it seems. But for the library to pitch in to say, what would you like from us? Let us take that on. You know, is that something that we want to do? And again, it makes us a little more essential than the ability to have us snipped off at the end as nonessential.
Right. No, I definitely think that that's something, you know, we can definitely contact the schools and see, you know, if we can get something out there to, to parents to, you know, kind of similar to what we did, like a flyer or something, or some, like a press release kind of thing to the schools on that.
And I would refer to, like, the principals, or Jen, maybe you can give a better, or any of the, any of you teachers can give a better idea, who would Karen best work with at the schools to find out, how can we support you in this time? Would it be the principals? Would the principals say, okay, great, Karen, I'm going to get you in touch with so-and-so? You know, how would she go about that? So, all right, I'll let somebody else have a turn.
I've already talked to Laura Kemet about the schools and the library. You know, right now, we're nonessential. But she's, you know, her comment was, we're very essential. It's just in the who's open and who's closed right now, we're considered to be nonessential. From the, the select, I've been attending the selectmen's meeting, the school committee meetings. Maybe the superintendent? Do you want to send an email to John and Laura to start it off?
Well, I know Kate has a contact that she would send to, so we'll try, we'll start with them and see, you know, where that goes, so.
That's good, great.
They're still sending, I know from the middle school, I know the, the principal still sends periodic emails, kind of letting us know what's going on and, and, you know, where things are at. And, and lots of times, I believe, if memory serves me right, they have been listing resources and stuff too. So I would definitely say, well, like you said, the superintendent, but definitely the principal, I think, because they've been trying to get in there. And then the, their guidance counselor and school psychologist have been getting involved too. And also, is it Madeline Story, the, the, the middle school librarian?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Yeah, they, she might actually have some, some good input there as to what could be, you know, what sort of needs it could fill. I mean, I'm familiar with a couple of the, the English teachers. But, I mean, I could certainly, you know, I, I would check with, with the, the higher up, so to speak, first, and then, and then see what else, you know. But to, to have a list, and, and like I said, and when the, the principal sends out these emails and stuff, it, it would be these things that the parents could refer to through the library, so, that'd be my guess anyway.
Jen, you have anything?
No, I thought that Diana's list was, between Karen and Diana, I think it was a very extensive list of ideas. And I think anything that Karen can do to put the plan into some kind of a coherent document, so that when the time is right, we have it all ready to go. I think that's good of you, Karen, to start thinking about this in advance and have it ready to go.
I just had one question for when we do the, the opening and stuff is, have we, have you had any contact with Mary Collins? Because I'm thinking, well, the senior center is, obviously, we share the same area, but what I'm thinking is that so many people that go into there with the compromised immune systems, that they might not feel comfortable being so close to the library entrance. And so I was wondering about getting her input about, you know, if we need to maybe stagger hours, set up barriers, that sort of a thing. But I'm just thinking of, of that part of the community that's not necessarily using the library, but obviously is very close contact with.
Right. I had thought about, you know, possibly blocking off, if, like I said, if the community room's not going to be being used for meetings, that, you know, blocking off the sort of lobby in some way, fashion, so that people wouldn't be able to, you know, cross over as easily. But definitely, we still share the parking lot.
Well, that's, yeah, exactly. You, you know, you have the kids, you know, run, which is perfectly fine. You have the people in the wheelchairs. And of course, we have, we're not party to, you know, how they're going to be opening, because obviously, they have so many extra layers that we're not dealing with, so. But I was just wondering if, you know, we could just kind of keep that in mind.
Yeah, definitely.
Oh, Anne?
Nope, you're doing a great job, Karen. All of you guys.
Linda?
Yeah, nice ideas, Karen. Thank you. I did have a couple questions. I attended one of the webinars with the MBLC trustee. And Rod Fravini said how there are plans out there, and you might have been referring to them, Karen, about staged reopenings.
Yeah.
And one of the things, I don't know if everyone heard it, at that webinar, they suggested small libraries not necessarily be the first ones in the area to open. They'll be overwhelmed. And have you thought at all about limiting numbers of people who can get into our library at once, since it is so small, like they do in stores?
Yeah, that was one of the things that a lot of libraries had. So one actually I have here open now is Foxborough. So they actually have separated their, their procedure, your reopening plan, in terms of, you know, if there's some sort of a restriction of like gatherings no more, of no more than 10 people, and then gatherings no more than 50 people. So they have it broken down, and then in certain instances, they will limit the number of people in the building. They have that specified in their plan. And I have seen several other ones that have that as well. So that is definitely something I think we would want to include as a possibility for, again, depending on what, you know, what government, you know, the orders from the governor there are, or what local health officials say that we recommend that we should do. So, but that's definitely something that I was thinking of putting in there.
Okay, maybe even limit how long some people are in the building, so that it doesn't build up and people can't get in. Has that been done elsewhere?
You know, obviously, with, it's a little world of different than stores in terms of, you know, people go to the store, maybe they're in there in a half an hour, an hour. Whereas here, some people stay here for four or five hours. So that would obviously be an issue with, you know, keeping the flow going of people who want to come in, so that there's not one person staying for five hours.
Right. And then when you contact the schools, could you check out their plans for summer reading?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We actually are, that was another thing I should have mentioned that, I'm, Julie and Kate and I are working on figuring out how we're going to handle summer reading. So we're probably going to have a meeting at some point, virtually, a virtual meeting, and, you know, I think by the end of this month, to have fairly concrete plans of what we want to do, and then start working on it in June to get things going for, for July and August. So, because obviously, we're, we're probably not going to be able to have all the different programming that we were hoping to have. It's going to look completely different, but, but we're definitely starting working on that, so.
And then today, I did participate in a webinar on foundations. It was interesting. And one of the ideas is the yard signs around town. Maybe we could use the electronic police sign and mention that free Wi-Fi is available from the public library parking lot to people. People might not be aware of that. I don't know if that's something you'd want to consider.
I can definitely see it's available for us to use.
Okay, and then they also suggested that not everyone checks social media necessarily. It would be a nice idea to send out emails, and maybe even having some people from the foundation make phone calls to different people. I think email might be a good alternative means of communication, well personalized to some people. And perhaps if you wanted the foundation Gmail account to send out some of the postings from the library, you could let me know. I'd be happy to do that. We have over 100 people subscribed there, so that would increase our communication and visibility. Then I was thinking too, the school does have, I believe, lunch pickups or meal pickups. Perhaps the library would want to develop some kind of fold flyer for the people picking up these meals that might be helpful to the kids and the families. Just an idea, or even, I think one library was offering little packs, activity packs for the kids. It could be book-related, it could be activity-related. Just some ideas I picked up today.
Hi, Teresa.
Hi.
Hi, Teresa. Did you have anything else, Linda?
No, I think that will be good for now. No, I think that will be good for now. Um, one of, uh, one final thing, they kept saying in the webinar today, build those bridges. Um, you know, so keep in touch with the community and, um, you know, offer your services and let them know what you're doing. Which makes sense. And I think you're doing a great job already, but we might be able to, amongst us all, think of additional venues to do it.
Yeah, definitely.
John, did you have anything you wanted to say? Are you there?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, Teresa, we were just talking about, um, when it gets time to open, how, you know, some of it was how we're going to handle it and other was what we're currently doing and what we're trying to offer more to the community. Do you have any concerns, suggestions? You'll have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, there you go. I, um, I'm sorry I came in late. Um, I had a work call, but, um, I don't know if you guys have already talked about this, but we're going through similar exercises and I was on a very long call about this from my own office today. Um, just the more mundane things, like, um, if people, the public are using the copier machine, is there a protocol for sanitizing it afterwards? Um, you know, we're all getting used to the line, you know, and, and this distancing, uh, between, you know, for when somebody checks out books and things like that. But there are some other functions of the library that, you know, you may want to think about in terms of, um, providing assurances that they are being cleaned or they're used in a certain way that's being monitored. And I'm gonna be the first one in line when, as soon as it opens, because I need some books desperately. My kids are like, they can't wait. They're gonna storm the castle any minute.
Yeah, I've been trying to come up with a list of, um, like a general list of all of our services and then going through each one and trying to figure out how it's gonna be reworked so that, um, you know, it can be safely continued. So, um, things like, you know, printing, faxing, photocopying, like I said, the computers, um, you know, all those types of things. We need to definitely think, well, we have so, you know, wide range of services, so it's a little difficult to, you know, come up with the whole, the complete list, because sometimes, you know, you never know what you're gonna have to, you know, what kind of questions people are gonna, or things people are gonna need help with. So, um, just trying to manage all that and try to figure out, making sure that we figure out a plan for all different types of services that we provide, what we can do, um, going forward to keep them going if possible, so.
Karen, do you have an association of other libraries that you can work with this? Because I'm sure all the libraries have similar issues, do?
Right, yeah, like I said at the beginning, we, um, I've been on several webinars and, uh, actually sales, our library network's sales has started doing weekly, um, sort of get-togethers virtually for, but we can just kind of discuss road ideas about what other libraries are thinking, doing, um, planning on. So, um, I'm trying to participate as many of them as possible. I just did one this week. Um, there's another one next week, so. Um, so yeah, trying to keep up with all that.
Well, Karen and I have been talking almost daily, sometimes more than once a day, of a lot of, a lot of things that everyone has already mentioned and some other things. Um, I wanted to mention that, um, if we decide, I mean, already in Hanson, if you go anywhere, you have to have a mask on. Now, the trustees can adopt their own policy, um, requiring masks and gloves. If we wanna do that, we would need to just double check that with the Board of Health, but that is something that we could consider. Um, let's see, um, of course, the MBLC is our major source of information and funding and what direction to go in. And they're pretty certain 2020 will still be a fairly decent year, but they have no idea what 2021 is going to look like. So, you know, it's all a work in progress. Um, as I said, I have attended the selectmen's meetings and right now, there's nothing about the, um, any furloughs or someone being laid off. We're already not up at full budget to begin with our full staff, so we really don't want to, um, go any lower. We shouldn't accept going any lower, is what my opinion is. Um, and for, but they did tell us for, if, um, for 2021, they're looking for a 21.2 increase in state aid. So whether that will happen or not, but that's kind of around where they've been. So that's on the agenda with them. Um, that's probably all I have. But one thing, when I was talking to Karen about the community room, one of my suggestions was, okay, you have tables labeled Monday through Saturday, because that's when returns come in. But then maybe we have a, maybe at first we just have holds being picked up. And like, there was a woman in the parking lot today, her and her husband came to return a book, so I just took it from her. And I said, they don't use computers and whatnot. So I said to her, it'll be announced when the library will be open again. And my suggestion is for you to call, not just come over, because we don't know how often we'll be open, uh, will it be full days? And, um, some days maybe we just drop off and other days will be for pickup. So, and I said, and if you know there's a book you'd like, you can just ask the person on the phone to put it aside for you. So there are a lot of people out there that still don't, you know, use social media. I would think they read the local paper, but, um, a lot of good ideas presented today, you know, are the ways to reach. And, uh, we are going to have another book club this coming Tuesday. So, um, there is a lot to do. But I guess it kind of goes to Karen and her staff to a certain degree.
Yes.
So, um, we talked about moving the furniture around. Um, and then I think people, like from the feeling I got from select, the selectmen's meeting, was there's a lot of people out there that have been laid off. Some people will be retired, some people may not, depending on kind of work they did. And, um, I had already brought to their attention at another time, which they mentioned, that people depend on the library to help them for that too. You know, um, they can use our computers, many other sources there. So I think in one way, we'll probably be busier than ever.
Yeah, I think definitely that's.
So, and I should also say that, um, I attended a webinar, um, in regarding state aid for this year. Um, you know, they realize obviously that people, because libraries are closed, we're not able to purchase materials like we normally would. Um, we're not able to have our hours open, you know, the building open for people like we normally would. So they have, um, changed, uh, they've done some modifications to the state aid program for this year so that, um, we, all libraries have met their materials expenditure requirement and their hours open requirement, um, as of the governor's order in March. So, um, we, we're all set with, um, with meeting our state aid in those, um, those two categories. So we don't have to worry about, um, you know, trying to purchase materials while we're closed and things like that. So that's, that's really good that we have that available.
And there was that grant email that Laura sent about the, um,
Yeah, they turned out it wasn't for public libraries. There was a grant that they, they turned, um, sent out information about, but it was only for nonprofit libraries, um, so like private libraries.
Like Linda mentioned, the, you know, opening of libraries, other libraries open at the same time at one of the webinars I attended. They suggested strongly that local libraries that are much larger than us, let them open up first. Or else, yeah, lot, if we open first, we'll see a lot of overflow from other towns. Is that, you know, that could be a good thing, it could be a bad thing, but, you know, Linda mentioned it and I just wanted to mention it as well.
This is saying, I don't know that I would not open our library just because we're a smaller one. I think we just need to make sure we have it in place to limit, you know, know how many limits patrons we're gonna limit, determine that we're gonna have a staff member that is going to make sure. But I know that just seeing comments on Facebook, people are dying for it to be open. And certainly don't wanna have to send them to another town just because they wanna get a, a new book. So, um, I think we just wanna make sure that we have our ducks in a row. And as soon as we can open, in whatever shape or form that we, we go for it. As long as we're prepared. And I know Karen has Yowen's work to do for that, so.
Yeah, and, um, you know, I'm gonna be, um, like I said, I'll, I'll be working on this plan, um, over the next week. And, you know, hopefully have like a dra, a good draft, um, by then. Um, I also am thinking of, um, right now, we, the, uh, program that we're doing online is through the sales Zoom account. But I think, um, we should really need to look into getting our own Zoom account, because that is limited in terms of, um, you know, this competition for various libraries using it. So we, you know, you can request a time slot, but if it's not available, you have to alter your, um, your program. So, um, I'm gonna be looking into purchasing, um, a Zoom account for us, because obviously, like I said, this might be going months, um, in terms of virtual programming. So I think it'd be good if we could do that. And you can pay on a monthly basis, um, so.
Do you want a motion for that now?
Um, I, I mean, I looked up, it's about $15 a month, I think, and I can see you can pay on a monthly basis. So, um, I don't know if it's really, it's not like we're purchasing one lump sum over the $5 a month. So I think it's.
Yeah, actually just go for it.
Me too.
Yeah, I think also think that even when we're back open and things are going along pretty good, it might be nice to have a virtual program. Running, especially in the wintertime when it's very cold or if it's like we have a snow day. You got children's stories can be done that day instead of, you know, library attend, they're on their laptop at 10, you know, kind of thing. Um, and for people sometimes who don't wanna go out at night. You know, we could still have book club on Thursday night, oh, you know, once a month, if there was a storm.
Right.
We'll do something. So I think it's a good tool. I think I'm sure, I mean, I'm out of the office now because I retired, but so many of the people I worked with are at home and they're probably gonna start doing, uh, uh, things like that, like alternating with employees. Um, and I know in my department, they are really considering that because we're in a real tight squeeze. So maybe three people work at home this week. They might ro, try it by rotating, so, um.
I think also, not to be a Debbie Downer, but, um, if we're listening to the news and other advice that there, this may not be, you know, we may do an entry and then have to pull back and then this may be sort of an ongoing process for over a year. And so to have it kind of put in place so that it's not, you know, to start all over again.
Right, right.
We're gonna make that will stick and, um, you know, like you said, we, we might wanna continue virtual programming. And there might be other situations where we're gonna change something and then well, um, you know, it'll continue, um, even past any sort of other restrictions for the virus, so.
If you haven't been by the library recently, you might wanna drive into the parking lot. The new trees are there and they look beautiful.
They do, yeah.
What, what was the type of the tree that we ended up getting?
Red dirt.
Eastern red bud it was.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. I just got confused.
Yeah, they're starting to a little bit open up. So he said next year he'll be back to prune the lower branches and gonna keep an eye on them. And, um, you know, slowly they'll start to fill out, but they won't be super wide, so. And, um, they just look so nice then with all the new mulch and everything.
They do, yeah. Like I said, they did a great job. Um, and, you know, Karine said they were very meticulous. She, you know, was there quite a, quite often when they were there. So, um, they, I think they did, was it two days, right? They worked over two days, so.
Yeah, the first day I worked on my son's hand.
Karen, you're gonna have to let me know what the watering schedule is too.
Okay, yeah, I've been going every day, so I'll keep doing that.
Is there a hose there?
The hose, um, I'll be there at nine o'clock. If you're available tomorrow, you can come by and I'll show you. On days it rains, I don't need to go by. But really, I'm not depending on anyone to help because, you know, I really don't have any responsibility now. So to shoot over there once a day, it takes me about 20 minutes, because I've developed a pattern now, so. Anyway, but if someone, you know, um, be there tomorrow at nine, if anyone wants to come by and see. Um, my son's friend is coming because he's helping me do some landscaping at home, so he's went with me today. Two people, you do it under 15 minutes, so. But, um, that's about it for me.
Okay, so yeah, like I said, um, I am gonna, like I said, I'm gonna send a letter to the town administrator, just, you know, detailing some of my concerns about, um, you know, going forward for library reopening. Um, and then, um, I will, like I said, I'll be working on this plan and I will send out, when I have a draft, I'll send it out to you all. Um, see if there's anything that you wanna add or change or, um, any of the suggestions, so.
So I missed the beginning of the call. I'm sorry, but did you actually have a date that you were thinking about reopening, or?
No, I mean, right now, obviously with the, it's May 18th is the governor's, um, date. So, you know, we would go advise that if that, if that was extended, we would have to wait. Um, but there's no, and obviously we're gonna go with guidelines from the, um, Board of Health and, uh, town officials to, to see, um, what they recommend. But there's no specific date right now.
No, no, if he says next week, I mean, he said in the 18th he can open, we still have a lot of prep to do before we can.
Right, yeah. It, um, a, a lot of libraries are thinking of, um, it's, that it's a three-phased opening. So the first phase would staff come back alone without opening to the public to take care of things. Um, then there would be an opening for the public, but it would be limited in a, a lot of fashions. And then, um, it would, then it would be more like a full service. So the three phases is what most libraries are, are putting into their plans that I'm seeing.
Somebody asked me recently if they thought they could still put a hold on books now, or should they just wait until the library's back up and?
Um, they can put holds on. Um, there is gonna be a delay. Um, they're gonna be staggering filling holds just so that the delivery service and, and library staff don't get overwhelmed. So if you put a hold on now, um, you know, it'll, there'll be some of them that'll be filled, then they'll wait a bit, fill some more, fill some more, and kind of do it in a staggered fashion, so. Um, but people can put holds on through their catalog, online catalog.
But there's nobody there now filling holds, right? I mean, you don't have staff. So you, you, people have to be, be patient. It's not as if on May 18th, they're gonna get all their holds, right?
Right, exactly.
I put the holds on because if I don't do it then, by the time the library opens, I'll forget. So I figure if I at least put it on there, I'll get it sometime during the year and I'm happy, so.
And sales, um, your sales is.
Making sure your holds are ready.
Sales is doing a lot of work too. Um, so they're, um, the net, Library Network, they're, have a whole plan of, um, you know, things like, things like holds, how to handle those, um, how to handle, um, you know, different like reports that we get and things like that. So that they're, they have things like staggered and they have things set to, um, and renewing, um, checkouts and all that kind of thing. So they have a plan as well for, um, that we rely on for the network. Um, they have a plan for us as well. So, um, you know, that'll be incorporated into what we're doing.
Question?
Yeah.
Um, I'm assuming that the Board of Trustees would approve any reopening plan before it was instituted?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be sending you, like I said, it's, I'll send you all a draft. Um, we can work on, um, you know, getting it into a final revision at some point.
Do you think, um, Karen, we should have a meeting in a couple of weeks?
Um, yeah, why don't I, um, I mean, do we wanna set a date now or do we wanna, you can?
Why don't you send out an email with dates?
Okay, yeah, 'cause I'll, once I have, once I work on a little bit maybe this weekend, um, you know, I'll, maybe next week at some point, send out an email to see if we wanna, if, you know, depending on how long it's gonna take me to, to work on it. Um, maybe toward the end of the month, um, we can figure out a meeting date.
I know that, um, the selectmen are meeting, so, and I just mentioned this because of, you know, due to go to meetings. Um, they're meeting, they're meeting the 19th, the 26th, the 2nd, and, yeah. So maybe first, if we did it on a Thursday again. So maybe Thursday, if we did it on a Thursday again, you know, but if you send out an email and then see what the majority goes with. But we probably should avoid Tuesday.
Yeah, right. Yeah, because that's, they have to, the town has to do their meeting on the virtual. So this don't have time.
If you feel you rather do it in the evening, just say so in the answer, if that works for you. Because, you know, I know many of you are working.
Yeah, my schedule's fairly open usually now. So if any other people have restrictions, we can do it later if it need be.
How's the virtual teaching going, Jen?
Oh, I'm loving it. It's better than no teaching at all. I got to go live for the first time this week, so I get to see the kids.
Very good.
Yeah.
Anything special for Teacher Appreciation Week?
Uh, no, just a lot of nice emails and, you know, videos and virtual things.
Yeah.
Okay. Was there anything else anybody wanted to add? Or?
I'll make a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Did someone say something?
Just wishing Karen good luck on her document.
Thank you.
So I'll call the motion to adjourn at 4:54 PM. What second is?
Second.
I'm sorry, was that you, Diana?
It's fine. Jen, put Jen down, which she won't be here much longer.
I just want to make sure, did Diana second that? It's cutting out on me.
Yes, I did.
You did. Okay, thank you.
Call in favor?
Diana, aye.
Okay. All right. See you in a couple weeks.
Thank you so much. Good to see you. I like seeing people. That's my favorite.
This conference is no longer being recorded.